I hereby call to order this meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Miller, I understand we have several amendments to the agenda.
Do. We're going to strike 0803A. The baseball group didn't, wants to come another night. And then we're going to also move 0807 above 0804. Since we have so many first responders here, we thought that they don't want, need to stay beyond their time here. And then we're also going to add language under closed session that will be as follows, and Mr. Golsky, our deputy attorney, will provide that information as well. So we're going to add language that will say "and" section 2.2-3711A1 for discussion, consideration, assignment, and salaries of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, namely the general manager of the King George County Service Authority. And that is it.
Do I have a motion to amend the agenda accordingly?
Could I just ask a quick clarification? So for the first responders resolution that was going before 0804, so it's going to be still after all the presentations? Is that the plan?
Yes. Because it's an action item, we felt that it needed to stay under the action item.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yep. Adoption of the resolution.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amendments to the agenda as presented by Mr. Miller.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Public comment. We'll now open the floor for public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. On tonight's agenda, we do not have any public hearings scheduled. I will start with those present in the boardroom first. I have a list. Ms. Marcia Stonehill.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Supervisors, Mr. Miller, and sir, I'm not sure what your name is. I'm Marcia Stonehill, 17094 Ferry Dock Road, standing on my left, Mr. Alicia Ward on my right, Melanie Ox. Not present tonight are Dora Johnson and Rob Gates. We are the RBAHC Board, and we stand in solidarity with the message we are about to deliver. Number one, we are very grateful for the work put forth by the county that led to the award of the $500,000 grant from the National Park Service for the roof repair of the Ralph Bunch High School. Number two, we are grateful that a diversity, equity, and inclusivity committee for our county is in the works. Number three, we are grateful that there is an RFP for the relocation of the Confederate Monument that has been posted. Number four, we are in hope with you, the county, and the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association that the RFP posted for the Ralph Bunch High School will lead to a prosperous and viable solution to the decades of effort of many. Number five, RBAHC remains active to honor and to serve. We dream of a county where all the independent organizations, businesses, and individuals will come together collectively, working with our local government body and government departments and committees to create a viable solution for the Ralph Bunch High School that many can learn from and enjoy. Number six, on this note, we ask that you keep in mind that RBAHC was created with direct input from the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association. We have documentation verifying this fact. We also express our gratitude to the many alumni who have given silent support to the RBAHC strategy. We are not here to compete or to interfere with any other viable plan. We are here to serve. If the RFP does not produce desirable, if it does not produce desirable results, we remain on standby, ready to serve and launch the capital campaign. We are confident in the RBAHC strategy, knowing that the first key is for the community to work cooperatively and collectively. Bear in mind, too, that this strategy has the ability to sustain itself after one year of full operation. Finally, we thank the many volunteers and professionals who provided pro bono service, not in honor of RBAHC, but in honor of the alumni and our local African-American heritage. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Wayne Bushrod.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow board members. My name is Wayne Bushrod, 10144 Dear Lane. I only want to mention that the community is still avid about the removal and movement of the Confederate Monument to another location. I realize the RFP for removal does not end until August 11th, but I did not want the momentum that has been established to go, to begin to diminish. Also, if any of you have access to or know if and where there are any drawings available that may disclose how the monument was built and erected, please let me know. And finally, if we know of someone who would remove the monument pro bono, would they still have to go through the RFP process? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bushrod. Mr. Don Shelton. Very good. I will strike your name from the list. Thank you, sir. Do I have anyone else here in the boardroom who wishes to provide comment here? Anyone else here in person before I move to online? Very good. Seeing none, Mr. Dines, do we have anyone waiting online who wishes to provide public comment? Go ahead. Ms. Jordan, can you hear us in the boardroom?
Yes, I can.
Very good, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
I've also given you a visual. It's Claudia Jordan, President of the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association, and I'm 11773 Big Bear Lane, Luthby, Maryland. Good evening all. I heard it said that oftentimes progress is achieved by traveling a bumpy road. Well, nevertheless, on behalf of the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association, we really echo our earlier appreciation to you, board members, and the exceptional leadership and astuteness of you Chair Cupka in seeking and succeeding at garnering resources for the Ralph Bunch project that are really tied to historic authenticity and educational equality. The most recent happenings, for instance, mentioned earlier, was the $500,000 grant from NPS, which was really monumental, and getting Ralph Bunch placed on the 100 Most Endangered Historic Sites in Virginia. Your efforts have not gone unnoticed, as Representative Whitman's office has reached out again in support of the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association. Memberships have increased, donations have increased regarding creation for the museum, and receipts of other tangible collectibles and, and collections from historians as well as families. Last but not least, I'd like to say that the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association at one point tried to affiliate with the Ralph Bunch Arts and Humanities Center, but they're on, we're on record twice as having withdrawn our support for lack of confidence. So I just wanted to get that out there and have no intentions of reconnecting. But most importantly, we want to thank you once again for all your hard work and for each and every one of you. Continue to do the good job that you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Mr. Dines, is anyone else online waiting for public comment? Thank you, Mr. Dines. Members, do any of you have written correspondence you wish to read into the record? No? Seeing none, I'll now close public comment, and we'll move on to reports of members of the board. Mr. Granger, would you like to start us out, sir?
Yes, ma'am. I'll be brief. I don't have much. Just like to say thank you to all who came out and spoke. Thank you to those who attended, teleattended as well. Thank you for providing your comments. Appreciate it. Mr. Bushrod, I don't, I'm not sure about the pro bono work in regards to the RFP. I'm just not sure off the top of my head. So that'd be a question I need to probably ask Mr. Miller or legal counsel. Just not sure off the top of my head, unless one of them could speak on it. Would, if someone wanted to provide pro bono work, would they have to still go through the RFP, or is that even possible?
There are exceptions to the procurement process for volunteers, but, and volunteer services, but it's a fine line sometimes, and so we would have to look at it in detail.
Okay. Other than that, the one thing I had was on Thursday, July 22nd, we had a Comrel Executive Council meeting. We'll have our next Comrel meeting, which is supposed to be up in Indian Head, and is supposed to be in person this coming Thursday, or Tuesday, the 10th. So I know everyone's always invited. I'll plan to be there as the representative, but everyone else is always invited to go as well. So that's all I had. Thank you much.
Madam Chair, if I, if I could add?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Addendum to what Mr. Golsky indicated. As you recall, August 11th is the date, so next Wednesday for the RFPs to receive. To date, Ms. Hahn has indicated we've not received any, so we may be in, you know, back at the next meeting talking about this, and maybe that would be the time we could have some more information for you, some answers about the pro bono possibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Stonehill.
Good evening. Thank you for everybody coming out for public comment. And Mr. Bushrod, we are definitely the two folks at the end of the table are the ones that can answer that question for you, so we'll definitely follow up with you on that. A short report as well. Thursday, 29th, I attended the LEPC meeting here, here in the county, where they spoke about the emergency response in the area, and of course, the resurgence of the COVID variant that is back here in King George. They also spoke about numerous accidents that we've had here in the county, you know, with a number of fatalities actually in the last month or so. But I just wanted to remind everybody just to be really careful on the roads driving. I drove down to Calio one day last week, and I had three cars cross the line in front of me, coming towards me. So everybody really needs to be defensive driving. Put your phones down, turn your radios off, whatever. But just please be careful. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Bender.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I will try to keep this short. I thank everyone who came out to speak in person and online. It is a great thing that we got the grant to try to mitigate some of the issues that have been happening at the former Ralph Bunch High School. Or current Ralph Bunch High School, not indeed. But the last thing I would like to say, I want to thank Healthy Generations, who serves our elderly, and they have reopened the cafe at the Citizen Center right now, only one day a week, but it's really important for our seniors to be able to get out and have that tie to their community and get a good meal and just see friends they haven't probably seen in 15, 16 months. So I thank Healthy Generations for making that happen. And then last, I just wanted to mention that I was appointed to the State Air Pollution Control Board. I was recommended from VACO, and why I'm bringing it up is because it's really important because they're going to be looking at regulations that might take away some rights from localities about site choice and permits for air, water. So it's really important. I'm the only county representative on the seat. There's one town representative and one city representative, and then the rest are all regulatory folks, so it's important to stand up for our counties, to make sure we have county control and have a right to say what happens in our community. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Mr. Bush.
Thank you to everybody who came out this evening to give public comment, and for Ms. Jordan calling in, and that will be my report for this evening, Madam Chair, nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. On Thursday, July 22nd, 2021, I attended the Rappahannock Regional Jail Board of Directors meeting. I want to congratulate, I think I saw him here earlier, Sheriff Giles, upon his election to chairman, and express my gratitude to outgoing Chairman Sheriff Decatur of Stafford County for his leadership. As a follow-on to Mr. Stonehill's comments about the recent fatalities on Route 3, I did speak to VDOT resident engineer David Beal regarding the matter. They are looking at some measures they could take. One of them is already in the, in the works. It's in the plan. He doesn't have a date for us yet, but they do intend to install center median rumble strips on that section of Route 3. There is not a timeline for that yet. Also spoke to the sheriff about the fatalities. I want to thank King George YMCA for their Bright Beginnings program. They held a shopping event at Walmart on Tuesday, July 27th. Thanks to everyone who organized it and volunteered their time to shop with the children. We had a number of sheriff's deputies, probably three quarters of the football team, all of the cheerleaders, and a number of community volunteers came out to help get those children ready for a successful start to the school year. Special thanks to Kim Wilson and Nick Miner from the Department of Economic Development and Tourism for your work on the National Park Service African-American Civil Rights Grant Program application, for which we were notified last week that we have been awarded $500,000 for a Phase 1 roof replacement project for Ralph Bunch High School. I want to thank my colleagues for their consensus to submit an application when I brought the opportunity to the, to the, forward to the board last fall. I want to personally thank everyone who contributed to the grant application process, whether your letter of support was attached or not. I greatly appreciate your input and your contributions. I want to thank everyone who came out and provided their comment tonight. I am hopeful for a path forward for Ralph Bunch High School that benefits and serves our entire community. Mr. Bushrod, with regard to the monument question, I believe we've given staff some direction to explore what the possibilities and the, and the poss, if that's even possible. So we'll get back to you, and as it was stated, it is open for a little bit longer. Ms. Jordan, thank you very much for your comments on behalf of Ralph Bunch Alumni Association. And Ms. Stonehill, and Ms. Ward, and Ms. Ox, if I got everybody right who was here in person, I wish to thank you for your comments on behalf of Ralph Bunch Arts and Humanities Center. Thank you very much for coming out. All right, that is all I have. We will close reports of members of the board and move on to the consent agenda.
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. County officials' reports. Do we have, does Sheriff Giles wish to present a report? No? Very good. Thank you, Sheriff Giles. Thank you. I don't see any other constitutional officers here this evening. A report of the county attorney, Mr. Golsky, you have an item for us, sir?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'll keep this brief, but by statute and the Constitution, we need to go through the redistricting process, which is every 10 years. It's been delayed this past year because of the, of COVID and the slow receipt of census data, and we've got an extension. So recommending that we appoint a committee to develop and, and examine and begin the process of redistricting.
And so, Mr. Golsky, would you like to read aloud the members of the proposed committee in, that are stated in the recommended action, if you would, please, sir?
Certainly, Madam Chair. It would be Lori Gump, who is the registrar for Loudoun County, myself as Deputy County Attorney. Sorry about that. Bad habits. Ken Golsky, Deputy County Attorney. Ms. Cupka, Board Chair. Kyle Convoy, GIS Manager. David Burge, GIS Specialist. And Mr. Miller, County Administrator. All of King George County.
Thank you for clarifying, sir. Do I have a motion?
I move to appoint a committee to oversee the county process of redistricting consisting of Lori Gump, registrar, Ken Golsky, Deputy County Attorney, and Cupka, Board Chair, Kyle Convoy, GIS Manager, David Burge, GIS Specialist, and Chris Miller, County Administrator.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Golsky.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, presentations and reports. 0803B River Stewart Award recognition by Mr. Brent Hunsinger, Friends of the Rappahannock. Welcome, Mr. Hunsinger.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Brent Hunsinger, Friends of the Rappahannock. Glad to be here this evening to speak with you. Couple things, if I have a few minutes, I'll give you a quick update of what is going on in the county as far as programming, maybe some things happening in the fall, and then we'll get to the business at hand. So thank you again. The first thing is we're hoping to, as long as the schools open and we are able to work in the schools, we will continue working with our EPA Office of Environmental Education Grant that we work in many of the counties in the Northern Neck Middle Peninsula, including King George County. We hope to continue some of our programming in the middle school. I've reached out to the high school in hopes of perhaps taking the ninth grade paddling for every single ninth grader. We do that in Caroline County, See No Reason. Hopefully, maybe we can get that done in King George County as well. Also, we have sub-grant funding, funding through that Environmental Education Grant that I hope to work with the Board of Education to put together a package that if they identify projects that the kids would like to do that are environmental education related, we can get that done. We have another year to administer that grant. Also, this fall, I know we've done some general tree plantings or tree giveaways in the county. The model's going to switch a little bit. I still would like to work with the county on that, but on more of a targeted basis. So if you all have ideas of communities or neighborhoods that lack tree canopy or need trees, please let me know, and I can work with you all to reach out to those particular communities to kind of do a more targeted outreach on that as we go towards 2025 with the river and bay cleanup at hand. Also, at the behest of becoming known as the garbage man these days, I will be trying to undertake a series of litter cleanups through Clean Virginia Waterways. And I have been in contact with Caledon State Park as well as other sites, the folks around the room. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Looking forward to working with them to try and clean up. I'm able to expand working in the county a little bit more outside of just the Rappahannock watershed, so I hope to work on the Potomac side a little bit more this fall and in the spring as well, on some litter cleanups. As of the dates, I have October 23rd, November 13th, and November 20th. There is no set sites for those quite yet. Caledon is one, hopefully. And then also, we working with the King George Garden Club and Parks and Rec on maintaining the trees that we have planted at the county parks. Please mark your calendars, especially county staff and any officials. On September 9th, we are hosting Friends of the Rappahannock, actually, the Rappahannock Roundtable, to be said, is hosting something called the Rappahannock Symposium, which is at the Old Silk Mill or right close to there. It will be all things Rappahannock River, from the mountains to the bay. It will include subjects such as studies that have been going on about how temperature changes are affecting river herring, to tree canopy, to a plethora of other subjects that if you find interesting, I'll make sure I send that information to you all, and I hope to see some of you all, as well as some county staff there as well. Another thing that has come up in the last two weeks that I have spoken with Mr. Stonehill about, especially because it impacts the Dogren community, is the Coastal Resilience Master Plan. The rollout of the outreach has been challenging in some ways. We have been, as an organization, Friends of the Rappahannock, we work with the Virginia Conservation Network. We have been in constant contact with the Office of Secretary of Natural Resources on the outreach piece of that plan that is being created right now. There will be multiple iterations in the future. Right now, it is only seeking to, to address coastal flooding, not riverine flooding, rain, increased rainfall flooding. So the GWRC region doesn't have as much stake in this one, quite as much, although Dogren is a major area that they will be seeking to address that with. There will be a special, a smaller targeted community meeting in Dogren in the next couple months, so we have been told. I will let you know and work with you on that, Mr. Stonehill, when that comes. And if you have any questions on that, I would really love to get more input from the county itself on that master plan. It's very important that you all have your say on that. There was a meeting last week. King George County was not present for a variety of reasons. Nine days notice is not enough. They know that now, hopefully, and will go forward. In the fall, keep your eye out for a host, a few public paddles, hikes with partners, hoping to make some of those public paddles, we have grant funding to make them not for fee, basically, if that makes sense, so open to the public. The first 16 people to sign up would be able to come paddle with us, probably, most likely on the Potomac side, and then at Hopyard Landing as well. But to finish, the, why we're actually here is I've had the pleasure in May, but I've been very delinquent in letting him know that he actually won the award, along with all his staff and other folks that volunteer. I have the distinct pleasure to award King George County Parks and Rec Department with the River Stewart Award for the counties that I work in. Mr. Clark, along with his predecessor, and everyone at, I will say, countywide, has been a pleasure to work with for the last couple of years, and it's a testament to you all and everyone else that we are able to do programming in the county. Without county buy-in, my job, I get nowhere. So this award is being presented to him for, it's the only award for King George, Caroline, and Spotsylvania Counties. And it's for a agent, it would be a landowner, it could be a department who makes my life easy and we're able to do projects. Because that he has been so willing to work with us, not only on the tree plantings that we've done at Sealston and at Cedar Brooks Junior Park, but also the Native Plant Demonstration Garden, that I know gives you fits sometimes, but do, do know that it is very much so appreciated. We very much appreciate that. But I should also, I would be very remiss if I did not mention Mrs. Klein, Linda Klein, from the King George Garden Club, and other volunteer garden clubs as well, help us maintain those trees, and we will be remulching, and they are watering them to keep them alive over time. So once again, small medal award where you can hang wherever in the office you believe, or, you know, wherever they let you. Once again, thank you very much from, on behalf of Friends of the Rappahannock, thank you again very much.
So, Mr. Hunsinger, if, and Ms. Klein and Mr. Clark, if y'all could please come forward, and we'll take a picture in front of the board. Thank you, Mr. Hunsinger.
Again, I look forward to working with you all in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out. Congratulations, Mr. Clark. Ms. Klein, please pass our appreciation on to your organization as well. Thank you. All right. Mr. Clark, independent celebration presentation, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Yes, may I have a few indulgents just for one second? I really would like to thank the Garden Club and the members of the board, and all the other folks that have helped us, General Property Staff. That reward's not just me, it's all the, all the people behind the scenes that have helped. Very well deserved. I wish, like, wish we had a medal to give, you had a little sign to give to everybody, because it's been, been very, everybody's been very helpful in that. And then also, to the point that Mrs. Bender made earlier, Healthy Generations actually had one meeting last week. They are back now in August, three times a week, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at the Citizen Center, and right now their attendance is a little low, so if you are interested, they have a application process, you can go online and find their number and give them a call. I don't have it with me, but we are looking, they are looking for more participants in that program.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. You may proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present an after-action report on the King George Independence Celebration. Held Saturday, July 10th, at Sealston Sports Complex this year, Celebration had musical performances by The Dead Rise and Third Stream Giants, and concluded with fireworks by American Fireworks Company. Sparkies Barbecue, Wicked Southern Fair, the Dahlgren Lions Club, and Icy Something Icy were onsite as food vendors. We also had the King George VFW Post 12202, Jazz in the Country, Wizard for Delegate, and Youngkin for Governor as informational vendors who attended the show. Parks and Recreation's goal in planning the event was to keep our vendors and connections local. You can see that in our entertainment as members of The Dead Rise or King George County residents. Third Stream Giants is a regional group with our friend and neighbor Anthony Campbell as the lead singer. In addition, our sound and lights were provided by Sammy Hastings and Stephen Hagwood, respectively, of King George. With a preliminary budget of $40,000, which was funded by the Tourism Fund, we had revenues of $550 and expenses of $33,593.95. The highest cost item was the fireworks display, $25,000, with our musical performers being $3,100, and supporting sound, lights, and staging being $4,250. There was a small staffing cost from General Properties and Parks and Recreation Department part-time staff. On site, we also had four of the full-time members of the Parks and Recreation Department. Their cost is not included as the event was part of the normal workweek. The net cost of the event was $33,043.95. A short reminder of our condensed timeline for this year's event. On March 31st, this board approved the concept of the event. Early on April 1st, I learned that American Fireworks was unavailable for the weekend of July 4th. We contacted the other responsive bidder from the 300th Anniversary Event, but they were also not available due to a lack of personnel. I returned to you all on April 7th with the alternate date of July 10th. This was a 100-day window in which to plan and prepare for the event. In planning the event, we ran into some challenges, including the availability of King George-based food vendors. The vendors we had were King George-based, or in the case of Icy Something Icy, a regular participant in our farmer's market. Other local King George food trucks were already booked for that date. Being a first-year event, the food vendors ran out of some items and saw long lines as it was difficult to predict the number of visitors. COVID protocols and the changing pandemic restrictions caused reservations among staff on what other entertainment to provide. If other vendors, for example, a bounce house, had approached us, we would have gladly had them, but we were not seeking to add them as a free act or King George paid-for attraction due to COVID concerns. Staffing, especially in planning, was limited almost exclusively to the Parks and Recreation Director due to programming loads of the rest of our staff. Marketing was another challenge. We were featured in the freelance star shortly after the approval of the event, but no other marketing dollars were spent, other than word of mouth. So, other than word of mouth, marketing was web and social media-based. Following the event, we published an online survey to gather feedback on the event. All of the responses of attendees were positive. Ninety-eight percent said the fireworks were great. Sixty-two percent said Third Stream Giants were either very good or great. Eighty-six percent said the entire event was really good or great, or really good or incredible, which was the top two response categories on that question. Using GIS mapping and staff counts, we estimate there were more than 450 cars parked on the Sealston properties. Using the data from the survey and the number of cars, we estimate there were about 2,400 people in attendance at Sealston Sports Complex and Sealston Elementary School. We received reports from the King George Sheriff's Office and others that cars were parked at surrounding businesses, including Sealston Deli and Sealston Automotive, as well as survey respondents who stated they watched the displays from home. Our vendors reported long lines and strong sales, including selling out of some inventory. The IC vendor told me they missed the fireworks because they were still serving customers the entire time. Looking to the future, we need to first attempt to have all King George-based food vendors in attendance, but also reach beyond to attract other vendors, especially for food. Having a longer planning time will assist us as this, as we're being established annual event. We will reorient our informational vendors in the future as they did not see the number of visitors to their booths as they would have liked. COVID will hopefully be behind us, which will allow us for more activities. Adding specific marketing dollars and a plan for marketing will assist. And there's also an opportunity to partner with other King George-based nonprofits. Looking specifically at 2022, we already know that American Fireworks is not available for the weekend of July 4th. We could rebid the show, but may not find any other available vendors. In our survey, we had a number of people who commented that they liked the event being on the off-weekend. Staff recommends Saturday, July 9th as the date for a 2022 event. The Tourism Advisory Committee supports receiving a request for an event from staff. Two options for the event, and possibly, because we did have a very late-arriving crowd, we could stick with most of the current two, five-hour format. Obviously, a need to expand non-musical entertainment, whether it be bounce houses or other things on-site, expanding our food options. And we need one of those options, some of that entertainment would be a draw to get people there earlier in the day. But of course, weather does play an impact on that. If it's too hot, I know my wife will not be showing up with my four kids in 98-degree heat to hang out in a park all day. The other option is to go to a two-hour concert-type event. It would save us the cost of one musical act, but the other costs, the stage, the sound, the lights, would all be pretty much the same. With the decreased event time, though, our vendors may be hesitant to participate. And it would limit some overtime costs because our General Property Staff wouldn't have to be onsite as much, but it's not a huge change in the actual budget for the event. And so, other than that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Questions and comments? Mr. Granger?
So, I saw for the budget, there was about a little under $7,000 that was left from the budget to what was expended, correct?
Correct.
I assume that all just goes right back into the TAC fund?
Correct. All our expenses were paid directly from the TAC fund, so no money was transferred?
Tracking. Okay, thank you. Other than that, I don't have any other questions. I just want to say thank you to yourself, to all the staff that were involved. I know it takes a tremendous amount of effort from people, so thank you to everyone that made it happen. It was a great event. I got, I came back on that day from vacation, and I got the opportunity to come out and watch. It was great. Fireworks are amazing. So, thank you, and thank you to everyone that did all the work to make it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill?
Once again, great fireworks show, year number two. And, you know, everybody I talked to said it was just, you know, one of the best shows like last year as well. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you for all the, you know, everybody that they came together. My only comment, and I sent you an email about, I did push it hard for people, and they said, "We don't know anything about it." And even when I got on and tried to Google, you know, fireworks, King George, I found nothing. And I know you said it was on Parks and Rec. I looked, I couldn't see it. It wasn't on our county webpage under events as well, but, I mean, I had to really search for it. And the folks that I kept telling about them, they were saying, "We don't know anything about it." So, that's just, you know, for next year, more advertising, you know, to let people know. But outside of that, I thought it was fantastic, and looking forward to next year.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Bender?
Thank you. I just want to echo the comments. Thank you. Everyone, I've heard just amazing things about the fireworks, and I think the only complaints I heard about was the advertisement, as Mr. Stonehill said, and not really knowing about it to be able to participate as a vendor. So, with a bigger lead time, I think those will all be addressed. So, thank you and your staff once again.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Mr. Bush?
Thanks, sir. I really appreciate the after-action. What I would like to see, though, for the next event would be more outside reach and expand that attendance and actual participation outside, so we can be more in line with the title tourism. It's great that it serves the citizens of King George, but if the funding is there for tourism, we need to actually do something about tourism, get people coming to an event, not just the fireworks, but an event that enhances our tourism, puts people in our hotels, and also going to our restaurants. With that, I see the recommendations. I don't know if you're looking for any comments on that, but I will offer them. What I would offer is that any decision about 2022 be deferred to the new board is seated, because there may be discussions at that point about alternate venues. We have other parks besides Sealston Sports Complex, and I would like them to have a more up-to-date understanding of what current funding availability is in that TAC. But thank you very much for the report, sir. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. I do appreciate, first, let me start by thanking you, Mr. Clark, for your presentation, for all of your staff's efforts. I did see, I agree with Mr. Stonehill. I did see a great deal of folks who didn't know anything about it. So, any efforts that we can make in the future to improve upon that, I would encourage, which part of that then lends to, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Bush, but we know that these, that this type of vendor is scarce. And if we wait until, I was going to throw out the second meeting in January, we may not have anybody to do this. So, I would, I am requesting consensus. What is the will of the board with regard to the staff recommendation of Saturday, July 9th? Because, no offense, but I don't think the staff recommendation is going to change. It just may be, maybe two of the five people up here. So, I am requesting consensus from the board myself. Mr. Granger?
I'm, yes, I agree. Let's move forward with starting to look to plan it. Obviously, I know that there would have to be an official request, and I think that's what it's saying, TAC supports a request for 2022. So, someone would have to come in officially and then come to the board, so we'd have a vote on it as opposed to...
Right.
Yeah, okay. Just want to make sure. But yes, I agree. Let's move sooner than later.
Mr. Stonehill?
I agree. We need to get this planned and sit in stone, and I actually like the off-weekend. I mean, a lot of folks are gone 4th of July, so they don't, on the 4th proper. But I definitely like the off-weekend, so July 9th is good with me.
Ms. Bender?
I agree. That also would go to Mr. Bush's point of getting a lot more people from outside as a tourism, if we have it advertised a lot ahead of time, and this company is really great, and to lock them in is a specialized industry.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Mr. Bush?
So, if we're talking about just locking in the date?
The date, that's what I'm asking for.
I am amenable to that. If we're not discussing funding or venue, the date being locked in, I'm amenable to that. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, and I concur. And then the other thing I would note also was what Mr. Stonehill mentioned about folks liking it on the off-weekend. I saw the same thing. A lot of people said, "Hey, I was out of town on vacation somewhere else. I'm here now this weekend because it's the off-weekend, and I can see two sets of fireworks." But yeah, if we can work, though, in the true spirit of the tourism funding, as Mr. Bush stated, we do need to work on making sure we're doing more outreach to people outside of our community. All right, so I think you have your charge? Yes?
Yep.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, Caledon State Park Expansion Project Presentation by Ms. Lori Schlem.
Hello, and thank you. I'm Lori Schlem, and I'm really excited to tell you a little bit more about the Caledon State Park Expansion Project. But I want to take just a moment to tell you personally a little bit of my story, why I'm so passionate of this project. Forty years ago, my husband's grandparents, the Berry family, gave us two and a half acres as a wedding gift on this 455 acres. Through the years, the trustees had quite a job to divide, once they passed away, this 455 acres into eight parcels for eight grandchildren, my husband being one of the eight grandchildren. Through time, they realized, how do you divide 455 acres fairly between eight grandchildren? They realized they could not. So, their decision was to sell this property, unfortunately, to a developer, and that was the only fair way they felt they could give their eight grandchildren was through financially to sell it. The grandchildren had no say in this. And I only tell you this because I've had a lot of people that have approached me and said, "Lori, if you want this land so bad, buy it back." Well, that wasn't quite the case, because the trustees are still alive, thank goodness, and nothing is divided until those trustees are no longer around. But this land goes back seven generations. It is virgin soil, the forests, the water, the wetlands, the fields, the wildlife, and what's so precious, it sits right across from a gem that we have in our county, which is Caledon State Park. And also, what makes this so exceptional, there's one mile of a beautiful trail, the Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail, that runs through it. I'm not here to ask any financial support, but political support, a letter of support. DCR, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, says recreation is the economic engine, and this presentation holds the keys to the engine. I would like to have Adam Simonoff come up to present the PowerPoint presentation. He is a retired research scientist from Dahlgren. You know he's good. You know he's done his research. So, Adam, come show them the keys.
Welcome, Mr. Simonoff.
Thank you. There's the, on the website for the county, talking about the materials for tonight, there was a copy of the slides inside of that.
I'm sorry, the presentation was in the board packet. Did it not get sent to you to play tonight? Give me, bear with me one moment, please. I can... Can you lift it from the packet? If not, I'll find it.
Starts on page 63. That is correct.
Yep, standby one. Yeah, I don't, we don't want it sideways like that. Give me just a moment.
Should be able to rotate it.
Yep, I've found it. Standby. All right, it's coming to you. It's going to be one of the two attachments. Please allow me to apologize, Ms. Schlem and Mr. Simonoff, for the delay.
No problem, ma'am. Okay. So, I'll say next slide, that'll keep us rolling. I do? Oh, okay. So, just fast forward. Okay, I think I got it. Okay. Thank you very much for this opportunity. The former Senator Warner called the Dahlgren Navy Base the crown jewel of the Navy. An expanded Caledon State Park will be the crown jewel and foundation for King George County tourism and community recreation, fueling both STEM and liberal arts jobs. For people who aren't familiar with Caledon State Park and where we are, where it's located within the Northern Neck and inside King George, this map is able to show you up at the top of the map where the... where the red circled area is located. Caledon State Park is bordered by Route 218, Caledon Road and the Potomac River. And it's the first location when one is looking to tour in Virginia's northern neck. So we're the first stop for anybody coming from the Washington DC area or Richmond area. We're conveniently located for tourism from Washington DC, Richmond and Baltimore, but equal distance from each of those urban areas, which would make sense to eventually advertise to those folks to come visit us. Who we're talking about here is diversifying the economy of King George County. The Outdoor Industry Association has said that $29.1, $21.9 billion of consumer spending annually, with 197,000 jobs comes to Virginia just from outdoor activity. Our objective, why we're briefing this proposal today, is to say, let's make King George both a vacation destination and a community amenity. When people are going home from work from Dahlgren's Navy Base, they're taking back salaries between $50,000 to $150,000 a year back to Westmoreland, Fredericksburg, Spotsylvania. If we want that money to stay here in King George, let's give them an amenity just like people enjoy when they're in Fairfax County, Virginia, for example. We have a state park that has lots of opportunities. And when one is able to go to an expanded park that has a lot of opportunities, it tends to increase real estate values. It tends to create ancillary businesses and services that we'll discuss in coming slides. The takeaway from this slide is to show our nearest neighbor, Westmoreland State Park, versus Caledon State Park. Caledon State Park actually has more daily visits than Westmoreland. But as you can see, Westmoreland has more people staying there. If we have people staying here, then they're going to go venture out at night to get dinner. That's going to generate revenue in our community. So we want to create an environment out of Caledon State Park where people are going to want to camp for multiple days. Today, the present park only has six primitive sites where you have to hike in rather than drive in with, uh, with your own car or an RV camper that Westmoreland offers. So bottom line is, if we want people to stay here and spend their money and enjoy our community, we need to create an environment that creates that for them. And this expansion project does that. One might say, well, how do you know? Well, we know because it's been done in Virginia before. In Virginia District Nine of Congress, their congressman was able to get money for rail to trail funding. And their history for their Creeper Trail was very similar to our history for our Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail. At first, there was lots of resistance and then there was a lot of embracing. The Creeper Trail is named for a railroad engine that used to go along a lumber trail in Damascus, Virginia, in Abington area. And there was a sole employer, a chemical company. They had gone out, they left the town, they left the town pretty destitute. They were going under. The town was actually in debt. People were moving away. After they put together the, the Creeper Trail, all of a sudden tourism boosted. They got outfitters, they had to support a theater, they were support restaurants, lodging. The graph on this PowerPoint slide shows you that every year, tax revenue went up. That's what we can do here in King George County. We duplicate the success of the Creeper Trail with the Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail and an expanded Caledon Park, all encompassing the same thing. We call that one big state park. The methodology, we index the Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail and Lake Caledon onto the existing Caledon State Park. That creates new opportunities. So instead of just hiking and bicycling and camping where you have to hike into primitive sites, Lake Caledon today was going to be developed for 97 homes. Consider the space of a house, of a modest house. At least two campsites would fit within the territory of a basement foundation. So you're talking about maybe another 100 campsites. That's going to keep people here in King George County. Okay? The Railroad Trail, people want to bicycle, exercise. You've got that. It takes people across our county, out of the park. Businesses can make a profit. Outfitter, taking people to the trailheads, restaurants along the way, whatever can be worked out, or concessions, souvenirs, um, you name it. This is an opportunity where we go from just the Dahlgren known for our science, technology, engineering, and math, to now artisans, historians, reenactors that can actually tell stories of the history of Caledon. What did King George come from? What was King George like in the Revolutionary War? King George came after Caledon. Caledon actually got settled before King George County was established. There's a history to be told. That would make it interesting. Where Colonial Williamsburg is a fabrication from somebody's recollection, we're real. Today, a lot of people go to Caledon, they see a forest. They don't realize until they talk to a park ranger, there was a town in there during the Civil War. There's a lot of history. George Washington sold tobacco at Boyd's Hole. He was a surveyor by trade. He may have actually surveyed Caledon if we get the research together. There's a lot of story to be told and that would attract more tourism. And that would also put us between, we're talking about Bound Vernon, all the way down to his boyhood home. And his birthplace is where he worked. It's where he sold his goods. So to deep dive just a little bit, that we want to diversify the economy so we're not solely relying so much on the Navy Base. It's great. I worked there for 35 years. I love what I did there. But we need more to make everybody, uh, successful in the county. The county doesn't only have STEM people in the world. It has artisans, pottery makers, artists, recreation, musicians. There's a lot of opportunities. The, the lake will give us the ability to go fishing, boating. So we want to make sure that when people are coming across the new bridge, they're not just passing through King George. We want them to recognize, we actually have something to offer here. And by having an anchor, you now have something to build businesses around. The, the expanded Caledon State Park becomes your anchor. You build businesses around that, your service industry. People are going to want to stay at the lodging. Give you for example, what do they do in Creeper Trail territory? The hotels and the outfitters, they actually have the shuttle bus, or the trailer with the bicycles for the trail. They go to the outfitter. People are brought to the trailhead by this vehicle and they ride downhill the whole trail. Then they go back in the bus and they go back to their rooms. And they go and enjoy the evening in the community. We can do the same thing here. Just like you would have an airport shuttle coming to the hotels. We can have our outfitter for the bicycle trails and the camping or hiking tours, pick up people over at our hotels, take them to the venues. When people are coming to the base and staying at our hotels for their business meetings, they see this happening, they're probably going to want to change their mind and say, I want to come back with my family and do these things. So we've got opportunities here. That's why that's, comes from diversifying. To summarize the properties, Caledon State Park, it exists. It's a very historic, uh, park. It has trails. It goes back to the, uh, the 1659 when it was created. It was, um, given to the, uh, the, to the community, uh, through grants, uh, generosity of the, of the family that founds the park. But it's limited on what we can do. There's historic precedent for that park, uh, inability for us to do certain activities without expanding it. Bald eagles were endangered at one point. Now, we also see that there's other issues. There is a forest made out of trees that are found to be rare. And we don't want to chop them down. Because of the natural area for 18 years and there's still limited recreational resources by law, there are certain things that just can't be done to the existing land. We need to expand upon it in order to take advantage of having more tourism and have people stay in the community. Therefore, we want to expand it. Lake Caledon. Excuse me. Oh, I got ahead of myself. The Dahlgren Heritage Trail, a 16-mile trail, for pretty well-known among the bicycle community and people that do the running events here. It's private today. It'll become public when it becomes part of the expansion of the state park. And it goes through the county, which means there's an opportunity to do business services along the route, just like Creeper Trail does. Lake Caledon, today, a real estate developer is waiting for us to make a move to acquire it. Else, there'll be 97 homes there. It's a lake. It's 40, uh, it, it's several acres, I'm sorry, 455 acres of trail here. The, the lake is 47 acres large. It supports fishing, recreation, campsite circulating it. Fishing docks can be built there, cabins, camping. The things that one would expect to see in Westmoreland, we can bring here if we do this. The benefits, jobs, building, construction, retail, more park rangers, opportunities for music venues, opportunities for reenactors for storytelling, place for the youth to have summer jobs. Community would have family-friendly recreational activity opportunities to do. So we don't have, uh, you know, it, it reduces crime because people are busy doing things that have fun. And it also provides conservation at the same time. Meets federal funding objectives. So we have our Congressman Whitman, who is on the Natural Resources Committee. He believes in clean, in keeping clean water, having the natural resources preserved. Uh, White House has the same policy. So if we look for funding that takes care of meeting those objectives by adding the parkland, we meet that. And the, having a, a state park expansion for tourism is a clean industry. We don't have to worry about bringing in a polluting industry. We don't bring in anything that's not family-friendly. We're using the resources that are already here. We're taking the land that's already here, that's want, that the property owner wants to provide to the state for these purposes. There are funds available for forest and water conservation. There's funds for historic preservation, such as the Dahlgren Railroad, because there's a big Navy history behind it. The cloud, the Caledon plantation has a big history behind it. Potential funding sources would, could come from federal, state, or private foundations. We're looking at opportunities even from the Department of Defense. Because they have a program that's called the, uh, Readiness and Environmental Protection and Integration Program. They buy land to keep, uh, the population from interfering with military missions. And so they're able to help us as an, as one of the funding sources that I neglected to list on this PowerPoint chart. We're talking about the range of about 6 million bucks to get the land. That includes the Lake Caledon property and that includes adding the Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail, both properties, creating a brand-new Caledon State Park. So we look at getting advocacy from the Rotary Club for the business community to say, yes, we want this. We know in principle, they agree with us. We come to you for your political support because you represent the community of King George that says, hey, we've got a, the state park in our backyard. We're building a tourism endeavor and we want to have an anchor. And we can leverage this state park in order to have services and businesses grow up around it, just like they did over in the Creeper Trail community. We have the funding process where we, uh, it's very logical. We define the objective. We assign a funding manager, identify the funding sources that I showed you on the previous slide, building the advocacy as I'm doing with you tonight. Submit the applications. Granted, we're off to the races. No, start again, just like any other opportunities that you've been doing. Return on the investment. For your endorsement, you're going to get tax revenue without putting any money into the effort at all. Okay? So, because somebody would say, well, you're talking about the state, the state park. It's not the county park. Why are you counting to us? Because it's going to bring county jobs. Because it's going to bring county tax revenue for tourism. People are going to stay in the hotel here and pay the tourism tax. These are the folks that are going to go out to the park. They're going to want to come back on July 9th. They're going to want to see the fireworks. It all comes together. So we want to have the increased tax revenue for government services. More tax revenue for government services, better for our schools. We're for helping people in need that the government serves. It reduces crime, creates a cleaner environment. Instead of building something that creates dirt and risks pollution to the Chesapeake Bay, we maintain a park that people can camp and enjoy. The endorsements, talking about the board, talking about the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. Lori has spoken with the DCR people, their civil servants. They wait for budgets to come from their elected, our elected leaders, just like the county does. But those civil servants like the idea of doing this project. They want this. The Rotary Club, Chamber of Commerce, they want this. Environmentalists that Lori has spoke to, they, they believe that this is also the right thing to do. The citizens, or Friends of Caledon, it's a community of people that volunteer to help the state park. They want this. The people who are doing the Dahlgren Railroad Heritage Trail with Jim Lynch, they like this. So all we want is to have you say, yes, we want this to people like Congressman Whitman, Senator Warner, Senator Kane, our representatives down in Richmond. So that all everything comes together. That's why we're here before you. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Simonoff, for the very detailed presentation. We appreciate it. Um, Ms. Schlem, could you return to the podium, please, in case we have questions? And, um, I am, normally I would let Mr. Bush go first. It's his district. However, for the benefit of the entire board, I do want to let everyone know, I too spoke to DCR. I had a call, Ms. Schlem, as soon as you sent me this email last week, I sent an email to Clyde Christman. He's the director of DCR, because I wanted to pick his brain about this. So I did that finally this morning. So a lot of folks don't know what I'm about to say. So my first question is, why are you asking for this right now?
Time is very important. The Gerald's, who is the owner and developer, they gave me an email about two months ago and said, Lori, people are asking about this property. This is the time to build. And I know also their permits. They need to move on their permits. They're going to be running out. You said, Lori, you need to make something substantial fast. I started to call everybody I knew. And I have gotten tremendous results. Things are in the making. I can't say right now, but Clyde Christman is one of them. And, um, I have a lot of people that are working by my side to make this happen.
So I, I took a look at, because there is a special session, Special Session 2021-2 that started yesterday. And I did take a look at the ARPA funding. The earmark as it's written now, and frankly, the Appropriations Committee has notified all members that they, there will not be any amendments entered. So if it stands the way that the governor has issued it, $25 million of the ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan money, would go to the Department of Conservation and Recreation for outdoor recreation area maintenance and construction needs. So the first question I asked Mr. Christman is, does that in any way, shape or form mean acquisition of parkland? The answer to that is no. Okay? So then I asked, because further in the bill, and if anyone wants to look at it, it is House. it is House Bill Number 7001. If an agency wishes to spend any amounts from these grants for purposes that create an ongoing commitment that must be maintained by state resources after the conclusion of the federal grant, it must receive prior approval and authorization of the General Assembly. So, what he told me, because then I find in the previous Special Session 1, there were certain earmarks for certain parks. Certain parks are named where you can only, as it's written right now, both the 21 session and the 2019 session, do have certain parks that the General Assembly currently will allow for acquisition of land to expand the park. Right now, Caledon State Park is not one of those. However, Mr. Christman, and I'm only talking about the Lake Caledon property here, because quite frankly, you're not the owner of the trail and can't represent what his interests or intentions are. So, we talked about the Lake Caledon property. He did say that his department is very interested in it. He did say he thinks it would be a wonderful addition to Caledon State Park. But as far as the urgency goes from the legislative side, which is what we're here for, there is not going to be any funding coming out of this current special session to use for a park acquisition such as this. And so, his recommendation is, once we get through the current session, he'd love to not have a lot more special sessions, because it makes it harder for him to build his actual budget for the regular session in January. So, this is something that is definitely on his radar. I want to make sure all of my colleagues understand that. It is on DCR's radar. But as far as us sending a letter of support right now, he agreed with me that as far as funding goes, or any legislative action being taken by the General Assembly, it would be inconsequential. And I am not, and I'm just going to say this for me, I am not for sending letters of support just to make people feel good. They need to have the force of the board behind them, and they need to be actionable. And this today, so for me, it's, it's just, it's not right now, but it's not never. So, in a future, at a future time, I think it is worth pursuing, and it is definitely worth continuing conversations with DCR. And Mr. Christman said he was very happy to hear from me about this, to tell me about. I was on the phone with him for an hour today. So, he definitely has this on his radar, but for today, right now, I'm not sure that it's the best fit for us to do a letter of support right here tonight. That's just me. I'll, so, I will go ahead and now open it to Mr. Bush, so that everybody has the same background, and then we'll go down the line, and everyone can ask you questions. And you can respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Caledon State Park is, in my opinion, the crown jewel of my district. I'm going to elaborate a little on some of the points that I have. I've toured Lake Caledon. I've toured Caledon numerous times, and I've walked a trail. But I'm out of office in five months, so I would like to take advantage of this opportunity to address this at this time. I totally agree with the points Ms. Cupka made. But I do not support the expansion of Lake Caledon. So, there were numerous points made in the presentation. Kudos on the presentation, very thorough, are really like the way you laid it out. But I strongly disagree with the fact that this would diversify our economy. I believe our Economic Development Strategic Plan, if actually applied, would achieve that objective. This will not. So, I really intently read the diversity economics slide that we began this. So, one thing, I want to clear up right now, that the county would not have any money in this. Financial support comes in the form of all state and federal tax dollars. We pay those federal and state tax dollars. With that, they decide what is spent and supported, and what is not spent and supported. With that, if I was to write a letter of recommendation to support the allocation of state or federal funds, I would rather see those go to things like our roads, that we have to sit here and deliberate every year, what roads we're going to pave and what roads we're not. Infrastructure. Give more money to the comp board, so I have to start or stop funding so much of our public safety's salaries, because the comp board doesn't really pay what they should be afforded. That would eliminate some of our local contributions. So, financially, there is a severe stake for the county in this. This is a state park, and the state really has issues with maintaining it as it sits right now. And I would like to point out that, yes, trees are nice, waterways are nice. King George County is nestled between two rivers that we really don't have access to, but almost 95% of our county is zoned agricultural. We do not have a shortage of trees in King George County. We have a shortage of businesses. And if we need to diversify our economy, that's exactly what we need to do. I understand the contributions to the Chesapeake Bay, as that has been numerous points of contention and discussions in the General Assembly, but the Chesapeake Bay is cleaner than it has been in decades. The blue crab is thriving, grasses are at an all-time high, and that's based on the regulations that are currently in place. My biggest point of contention is the $6 million price tag that's associated with this own property that I truly believe is only worth $2 million, and that would be funded by taxpayers. Whether it's our federal or state taxes, grants are not free. It's not magic money. It comes from somewhere, and if something gets funded with a grant, that's something that's not getting funded with tax dollars. As far as the Heritage Trail, I think it's a beautiful asset to the county, but I don't see how it can go from private to public without a cost incurred. So, I'd like to see what that price tag is. And then, there's a lot of other issues surrounded that. The county did a partnership with them through Parks and Rec, and then, next thing you know, there's no more insurance being carried on the trail. There are a lot of issues with this. It's not so cut and dry. I think by the time this all gets sorted out legislatively in the General Assembly, my successor will be able to make this decision. It won't come to me, but for the record, I am not in support of this expansion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Bender?
There's a lot already been said. Ms. Schlem, I know the property very well. I remember when it was still in your family and doing cross-country fundraisers on it. It is an amazing piece of property. The property across the street, Caledon, is a famous landmark. Thank you to Mrs. Smoot, who had it in her family, Alexander family, for a very long time, or her husband's family. And it is a valuable piece of real estate that benefits all of our citizens. But Ms. Cupka has done a lot of research, and I don't know if, at this time, really, we have to wait and see what happens with the next General Assembly, and it's not the right time at the moment, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Mr. Stonehill?
Thank you both for the presentation. I see it a little bit differently. I actually like the idea. It's a beautiful piece of property. I've been to both of them. But as Mrs. Cupka said, that there's just no funds right now for the state. You know, if that's something that you all could come up with and get this done through the state park system, or through the National Park System, Park Service as well, I mean, I think it would be fantastic. I mean, I really like the idea. And the folks that come and they do the, you know, the run on the trail in March, we were down there, and everybody had a great time, you know, just the, you know, they loved it, you know? And I think this would definitely be a draw for folks coming from the area. Like I said, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. I'm all for being outdoors, being, you know, exercising, doing all that, and I think it's, you know? But unfortunately, there's, I think Richmond's kind of locked up on cash right now. But I really like the idea. If you can hold off the development for next year, and, you know, we can get some support when there is some funds available down in Richmond, I'd be all for it. And like I said, I really like the project. So, I wish you the best of luck with it.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Mr. Granger?
Just like I say, thank you for coming out and providing the brief, very informative. Ms. Cupka, I appreciate your input as well, and provided it at the beginning. Just be brief. I'm not in favor of moving forward with the recommendation at the moment, based off that information. I'm willing to consider it in the future, but I agree with Ms. Cupka's statement that if we're going to make a recommendation, it should be actionable. You shouldn't just recommend, and then it should just kind of fall on the floor, because they don't have the ability to execute on it. So, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. So, um...
If I could speak?
Yes.
The squeaky wheel gets the grease. And I've been working on this a year and a half. I have never put all my eggs in one basket. So, I have a lot of good things that are happening. And building 97 homes, you think you want, you're going to spend money on roads, you just wait till how many roads you're going to have to be repairing. But this is something very, very good. I see the future. This is the future of King George. It will never be a regret. It is an investment to the future of King George and the future to our children. And I'll just keep working on it, and I think I'm going to surprise you all.
Thank you, Ms. Schlem. So, I'll finish my comments. I would add that I did find in the 2021 Special Session 1 in March, I think it was Delegate ARC, passed an act that requires DCR shall develop recommendations for one or more dedicated sources of funding for the system of state parks in the Commonwealth. Such funding source shall be relatively stable from year to year. So, the General Assembly knows, they know, they don't have enough money to take care of what we already have. So, let's see what comes out of this. I talked to him about this, too. Mr. Simonoff, you brought up the DOD program. I talked to him about that, too. I talked about all the grant programs, probably every one on your slide. Believe me. It just, to me, if we're going to move forward with this at this time, this is DCR that's going to have to acquire, that's going to acquire the land, and is going to bear the cost that down the road is going to be borne by the taxpayers. So, DCR has to be ready to rock and roll on this. And the message I got today is, they're getting ready, but they're not quite there yet. So, I would offer to you, like I said, if we can keep the lines of communication open with DCR, I'm happy to do that, but I feel they are a more appropriate entity, because, again, they are going to bear the burden of this, to be talking to us about a letter of support, as far as that goes. But I am very impressed with your presentation, and as I said, for me, it's not right now, but I'm not saying not ever, because I, like I said, I had a great conversation with Mr. Christman today. And down the road, when his department is ready to pull the trigger, then we'll have another conversation. I'll have you back, or whoever the chairman is at that time. We'll see what we can do to get you on the agenda, if it's not in 2021. Okay? All right. Thank you all very much for your time. We greatly appreciate your insight.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right. Next item. We moved up 0807 to First Responders Resolution. So, Mr. Miller, do you want to lead it off, and then I'll read the resolution?
Yes, ma'am. So, we have a number of representatives from the Fire and Rescue, and as well as Sheriff Giles and some of his officers, and I don't know if you'd like them to come up, and maybe Sheriff Giles and Mr. Basham, if you would like to make comments. I know that Chief Moody is on vacation this week, and he regrets that he's not here, but we appreciate them being here, and very appreciative of your patience as the board works through a number of items. So, turn it over to you.
So, before I read it, can we, this is to be presented at the August 18 Fredericksburg Regional Chamber of Commerce Breakfast, right?
That's correct.
And so, normally, we send someone from the board there, and I just want to poll the board and see what the desire is, who should attend. I know Mr. Bush is the liaison to the first, to Fire and Rescue, so I wanted to put it out to him first to see if he was available. All right.
I can take leave from my job to attend that.
Very good. So, Mr. Miller, if you could please let them know that Mr. Bush will be attending, and I believe customarily, the county administrator attends as well, so if you're available that day, you're welcome to do so. And then, I'm sure Chief Moody and his staff, and Sheriff Giles and his staff, they will be there on some level as well. All right. So, with that, I will read the resolution, and then I will ask you all to come forward. And again, thank you for your patience. Come forward, and we will take a photograph. A resolution declaring August 18, 2021, as First Responder Appreciation Day in King George County. Whereas, King George County, Virginia, volunteer and career first responders, to include law enforcement officers, firefighters, paramedics, emergency medical technicians, and 911 dispatchers who bravely and selflessly risk their lives every day to protect families, visitors, and businesses. And whereas, first responders do not hesitate to risk their own lives in order to save the lives of others. And their commitment to continued training, skill enhancement, and inter-agency coordination make them vital members of our community. And whereas, the life of a first responder requires the sacrifice of time with family and physical and mental stress. And whereas, acts of kindness and appreciation from citizens or first responders provide them needed encouragement and support to confront the dangerous and uncertain situations they face every day. And whereas, the Fredericksburg Regional Chamber of Commerce, in partnership with community businesses, is honoring all regional first responders on Wednesday, August 18, 2021, during the First Responders Appreciation Breakfast in Fredericksburg, Virginia. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of local first responders and emergency service personnel, including emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, law enforcement officers, and the many individuals, volunteers, and others that provide services to King George County and its citizens. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the King George County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims August 18, 2021, as First Responder Appreciation Day in King George County, in an effort to recognize and celebrate our county's first responders, and encourages all citizens to take time out of their day to show first responders and their families how much we value their service to our community. Adopted this third day of August, 2021. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please come forward, we would like to take a photograph. Thank you all. Have a good night. Be safe. All right. 0804, County Administration. Appointment of County Administrator to Rappahannock Regional Jail Board of Directors. Jail Board of Directors. So, Mr. Miller, I don't mind handling this since this request came from me and the jail board at our meeting last week. It was noted that typically the county administrator of each of the localities holds a seat on Rappahannock Regional Jail Board of Directors. And since we had an interim for a bit, we had not appointed anyone to the seat. So the jail board has requested that we appoint Mr. Chris Miller to the Rappahannock Regional Jail Board. And Mr. Miller has agreed to do, to serve.
Yes, as long as there's no overnight thing or no overnight requirement to, you know, stay in the jail.
I toured the jail the last time. I requested an impromptu inspection of the jail. And I will tell you, I, I have been in churches and schools that were not as clean as the jail. But, but we're not going to, I'm not going to say anymore about that. Do I have a motion?
Gladly, sir.
To appoint Mr. Miller to the Rappahannock Regional Jail Board of Directors?
Move to appoint Mr. Christopher Miller to the Rappahannock Regional Jail Board of Directors.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for agreeing to serve. Item 0805, Appointment to King George County Social Services Board of Directors. Mr. Bush, would you like to elaborate on this?
Due to my current circumstances with my employer, I'm unable to meet that, that time requirement for the meeting. So I resigned my position as a representative of the Board of Directors. I reached out to Chairwoman Cupka as soon as I did that and asked her to be able to solicit for my replacement on that Board of Directors.
Is there a motion?
Move to appoint Ms. Ann Cupka to the King George County Social Services Board of Directors.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bush. And 0806, Appointment to the Comprehensive Policy and Management Team. Mr. Miller, would you like to fill us in on the correspondence you received?
Yes, ma'am. I received the correspondence from Ms. Ann Bush regarding her recommendation to appoint Dr. Meg Nice to the Comprehensive Policy and Management Team as the King George County School Alternate Representative. And I believe you have a letter in there. You should, yes. It's on the, you don't see it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Very good. Yes. Now, Dr. Ann Bush.
Well, I stand corrected. I apologize. Dr. Bush.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move to appoint Dr. Meg Nice to the Comprehensive Policy and Management Team as the King George County School Alternate Representative.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Mr. Miller, County Administrators' report.
There are two items in the agenda, and then I'm just passing out. And these are very brief. The first is to schedule a board staff CIP meetings. We need to solicit some dates. And also the ARPA funds meeting. So just to let you know, as a reminder, the Planning Commission gets the CIP next Tuesday. And the staff will be there to make their presentations. And then after that, it gets into the lap of the staff. And then we need to schedule your times to go through that. And so I guess if you want to put that on your, your calendars, if we want to come up with a date right now, I realize it's a late night right now. But if, if, if we can be thinking about some things that work, if...
How soon are you looking?
As I understand the process, the Planning Commission gets it. And after that, it goes back to staff. And then we would make, if there are any changes that come from Planning Commission, then we would incorporate those and then bring those to you. So I would think maybe towards the end of this month or, you know, want to start in September. You know, I, I know that...
So if, so the Planning Commission holds its public hearing on August 10?
Not a public hearing.
No?
Just to, yes, please come up.
Please, yes, Ms. Hahn.
Heather Hall.
For clarity, the Planning Commission will hold their public hearing next Tuesday. They will submit their final rankings at their September meeting. So you will not see it until October.
Oh, okay. Well, that makes sense.
Then have to advertise two weeks in advance, et cetera.
So there's, so that would be September 14th? Is that their normal?
If that's the second Tuesday.
It's the second Tuesday. So we're looking at days after September 14th, right?
And then keep in mind your advertisement requirements.
For work sessions?
For your public hearing.
Yeah, we're just talking about work, work sessions right now.
You're looking at October.
Late September, October, yeah.
Okay.
After the 14th. It's when we could start having work sessions at least.
So...
So I mean, everything goes to plan with the Planning Commission. I mean, it goes long, then.
Yeah. Would you be ready to hold, to support the first work session on Tuesday, September 28?
I, once the Planning Commission is done with it, we pass it on to you guys. So I, I won't be a part of that process.
I don't know. I put something out and you can give me a, a date. I apologize. I, I thought that this was a much more streamlined process, but I understand that the nature of the process. And so...
And yeah, normally we have three or maybe four work sessions.
Why don't I put a note out, we'll put a note out to y'all about...
Okay.
What works for you over the course of the month of October, late September, October? And then we get it, get it adopted.
Is general consensus Tuesdays?
I'm fine with that. I'm, if, I already saying the 28th, I don't mind even just if everyone says they're amenable to that, just...
Yeah. Why don't we do kickoff on the 28th? And does that work for everyone?
Okay.
Tu- Tuesday, September 28th. Yes, please.
Okay. Well, we'll just lock that in. And then, you know, we can make decisions going forward at, after that first meeting. Maybe you'll love it and it'll be done that night. But I...
It's never that easy.
Like your optimism. That's great.
Does 6 o'clock work for everyone?
Yeah, I can make that work.
Yes. All right. So 6 o'clock?
You could do earlier if, if everyone wants to. But...
I can't do 5 o'clock. I can do 5:30.
5:30.
5:30 work for everyone?
Thursday work is, as long as staff is as well.
We'll be here.
Okay. And then you have a request for ARPA work sessions?
Yes. And I think that that's something that I would like to visit with, with Ms. Hahn about. Do they, we can do it together. You know, we could reserve, you know, a little bit for the CIP, then talk about the ARPA. Because they're all kind of somewhat related. So that's how we were thinking we would present it.
Great. All right. Sounds like you have a good plan going forward.
Okay. Number two is just, just to remind you or to inform you that the Berkeley Group, who is working on the, the complete revision of the zoning ordinance, is looking to do a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and yourselves on the, for their presentation on the 15th of September, if that's something that'll work.
Everyone tracking that? September 15?
I would...
6:30?
I would say we, we should schedule that probably as early as possible. 15 people in a room. So 10 Planning Commission members, five Board of Supervisors. Based on the nature of this presentation, there's going to most likely be a lot of discussion. So...
Yeah. So this is the date that works for the vendor, the Berkeley Group, the consultant?
Right. And I do believe, I think Heather, you indicated that the, you've made your Planning Commission aware of this. So I, are they counting on this date?
They are counting on this date. And the earliest that they can meet is 6 o'clock. A lot of them travel out of town for work.
Now, I, I, I think the important thing is also to note, this is going to be a process, correct?
Yes. This is just the initial meeting. The Berkeley Group wants to get a flavor of what you would like to see, what you don't like in our ordinance, things of that nature. So should be a very lively discussion.
And I think, you know, the thing that we could probably, you know, give them a little preface of is let's set some parameters for that night. I mean, you know, you don't want to be here till 10 o'clock at night still debating things that are kind of in draft form. I mean, I think if we say, let's agree on, we're going to get through these kind of points and let them do their thing up to a limit, I think, because it's going to be multiple presentations, multiple opportunities to have these joint meetings. These, these things do take time. And it's, and it's rightfully so, because these are big issues, you know, for your future development.
I would like to, sorry, I, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome Mr. Miller to King George County. And that 10 o'clock is not really so late for us, being we've previously had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission that were well beyond midnight. So just wanted to bring that point up.
I, I appreciate that. The other thing that I have on here, if there's not any questions about that item, was, and Chris Dines can, and bring this little bit more information on tomorrow, our firewall is getting worked on for the administration building. And so there's going to be a period of time, perhaps the entire day, hopefully not, where there's going to be really limited internet. So the ability of some staff maybe to respond email-wise or, you know, doing research may be limited. But we are, Chris did do a KG alert for the general public who may subscribe to that service. But is there anything else that we need to point out? If you all are looking for us, we're here. Probably they can get through cell phones and the regular phones aren't going to be down, are they? It's just the, okay.
Please go ahead, Mr. Dines.
Yes, we're going to forward department calls that ask for that service to their cell phones or to another landline in their office that has a POTS line and not our SIP phone connection. And we put it on Twitter and it's on the website as well. And Chief Basham actually did that for us today. And he's going to do another one tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM to remind people of the same. So hopefully it won't be all day, but we don't want to promise anything we can't keep. So we just, you know.
Just be aware, if you do get any constituents, let them know. They can still reach us and, and our apologies.
Yeah, the offices will be open. They could come in. But a lot of people might not have a great time coming in and finding out that things aren't working. So hopefully we got it around as early as we could so that we could nail down that time.
Thank you. Number four, just to let you know that the, the Solar Town Hall that's, has been scheduled for your meeting on the 17th. And then we are planning to make a presentation on the Community Development Department's survey results at your first meeting in September, which will be the 7th of September. And so the Solar meeting is going to be part of your next, next meeting. And in miscellaneous, I would just point out, if you remember at the last meeting, you had several folks who lived in the, live in Project Faith. And I know that Supervisor Bender and also the Chairman Cupka reached out to these folks as well. And we have got some information. And I would just point out, when talking with Jonathan Franklin, who is the Director of Social Services, he got some information. So the, the, the group is managed by Severn Management. The, the homes are managed by Severn Management. And they're involved with the Angelwood property. Project Faith is still the owner of the property, but has stepped away from the day-to-day operations, which are now overseen, and this is according to Mr. Franklin, by the Virginia Community Development Corporation. Project Faith has been unable to pay the bills for the property because the rates are so low in comparison to market rates. They did not raise rates during COVID last year. And the rates are a 5% rate increase, is an average of about $20 a month. And we realize that's still an impact to people who are on a fixed budget. So I, I will say this, from what we learned from Mr. Franklin, nothing was, I don't believe anything was done in a, in an unseemly way or, you know, and in a way that was disrespectful. I think that they held out as long as they could, obviously, given the COVID emergency to raise rates, which I think was pretty much indicative across the board. But, you know, I, I'm sure that there's communication issues, like any organization. But I, but what we get is that they, you know, there is a oversight at the state level that they can provide. So if you do get any more comments, let us know and we'll respond and let them, let them know as well.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions for Mr. Miller about his report? Mr. Stonehill?
Just clarifying the time for the Planning Commission meeting, 6 o'clock.
I believe that's what we said. 6 was the best time for the Planning Commission, so...
Anyone else before we move on? All right. I believe we're ready for a motion.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to VA Code Section 2.23711A5 and 39 for discussion concerning prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business's or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, and discussion or consideration of information subject to the exclusion in subdivision 3, subdivision 3, Virginia State Code Section 2.23705.6, related to economic development, and Sections 2.23711A1 for discussion, consideration, assignment, salaries of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body named the General Manager of the King George Service Authority. I invite the County Administrator, Assistant County Attorney, Deputy, Deputy County Attorney Nick Miner and Heather Hall, because they are deemed necessary, and where their president, presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration. The topics to be discussed pursuant to VA Code Section 2.23712F.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We are in closed session.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certified by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law. And such only public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
Each member so certify?
So certify.
So certify.
So certify.
So certify. We are in open session.
Okay, I move to amend the contract employment for the county administrator in a form approved by the county attorney to allow for his appointment by the King George County Service Authority as its interim general manager under the terms and conditions in its resolution of appointment. Including the receipt compensation beginning on August 12th, 2021 to be paid out of funds of the service authority.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn until August 17th at 6:30 PM in the boardroom.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are adjourned.